All right, I have 3 o'clock. Anthony, are we set to go, sir?
Absolutely. I have just got my devices rolling, Mayor, and the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon. This is a special meeting of the City of Morro Bay City Council. It is Tuesday, May 25, 2021. It's 3:00 p.m. This is one of two meetings, the second of which will occur, which will be a continuation of this meeting tomorrow, May 26, at 3:00 p.m. as well. I'll go ahead and ask the clerk if she could establish a quorum, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
I am present.
Councilmember Heller?
Here.
And Mayor Heding?
Present. Thank you. We do have a quorum, and I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N. 29-20 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17, 2020, this meeting will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on cable channel 20 and streamed on the city website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, the Veterans Hall will not be open for this meeting. Public participation will be through either Zoom and/or a direct call, and we will place that information on the screen prior to opening public comments, so that anybody that would like to bring a public comment forward can use those two methodologies to do that. Again, welcome. I will go ahead and ask that, pardon me, that we open up public comment. This is public comment for items on this special agenda only. Again, items for this agenda only, not general public comment. So, thank you. The screen has information on how to access public comment, either through the Zoom link or by calling the phone number on the screen. Please be sure to use the raise hand icon if you would like to speak if you're linking via Zoom, or be sure to press *9 to raise your hand and be recognized if you're calling in. Again, welcome, and I will go ahead and open up public comment. Anthony, do we have any public comment at this time, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
Okay. I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the council. Council, this is one of two study sessions. We're taking no action this afternoon. This is question and answer and/or comment period on the part of council. We will be taking action in June at our meeting at that time on our budget, and so just wanted to call that to your attention. We do have ample time this afternoon, and this will also be continued, as I mentioned, to Wednesday, May 26, at 3:00 p.m. as well. By virtue of introduction, I wanted to, especially at this time, thank Ms. Lictig, who really came forward and rescued the city at a time where we had turnover of a very important position. That was our Director of Finance position. And Ms. Lictig stepped up as a CalPERS retiree with great background and experience in city government. And Katie, I just want to, before we begin, to thank you for your tenure with our city. Not only have we enjoyed your interaction with you, but we really appreciate your expertise in all that you've done for the city during a time of transition and during, in the midst of a pandemic, when there was a lot of chaos and a lot of change, but you stepped right in, and I just wanted to open with that recognition of you. We appreciate that. For the public's information, Ms. Lictig is about finished with her tenure with us. That is limited by CalPERS rules and regulations, so we will be having changes in that department soon. But again, Katie, thank you so much for all that you continue to do, have done for us. We appreciate you greatly. And I also want to recognize, for those of you in the public that had the opportunity to review the rather massive budget binder, the operational and capital budget, especially noted in there in the opening letter from Mr. Collins, our city manager, something very important. And I think I will go ahead and read it, just as an opening. Because of the significant action of staff, and basically on page A1 of that document, it says that shortly after a local emergency was called, which was obviously the pandemic, COVID-19, and was declared to fight the pandemic, the city council and city management activated the city's short-term fiscal emergency plan in March of 2020. The city took quick and drastic action to adjust revenue projections for the remainder of fiscal year 2019 and 2020 and to curtail expenditures to ensure that the continuation of the solvency of the city could be maintained, especially that of the general fund. And I call that to your attention to especially thank the leadership, Scott Collins, our city manager, our department heads, Ms. Lictig again. I do believe because of that very swift action and the initiation of the emergency plan, it limited the damage financially to the city. And I'm especially grateful for our employees that participated in that, but also gave concessions with regard to their salary during a time, again, of significant change and when we were experiencing the pandemic. And so I just want to recognize our great employees in the City of Morro Bay and just thank them ahead of time for their commitment to the city and literally getting us through with pay concessions, which were difficult, especially during a pandemic. And I'm especially grateful for all of our staff and the significant action that was taken to mitigate what potentially could be disastrous for the city. So with that, this again is a study session for council questions and/or direction. Again, no action will be taken at this meeting or the meeting tomorrow. And once again, it's my pleasure to turn it over to Mr. Collins, who will introduce, and then Ms. Lictig will, I believe, do the presentation. So, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, members of the community, and as the mayor said, thank you to the Citizen Finance Advisory Committee, or CPAC, for reviewing this document a week ago. So Katie is going to share the screen, which includes the PowerPoint presentation for everybody, and hopefully everyone can see it now. Go ahead, Katie, in advance to the next slide, if you don't mind. I'm just going to do a quick, you know, lead-in and then hand it over to Katie, who was the brains behind this really awesome budget. So ultimately, we do an annual budget process that starts with staff working together to develop recommendations. That's brought forward to the CPAC and then ultimately to city council for consideration. The budget process, year runs from July 1st through the end of June the next year, so it kind of cuts in the middle of two years. That's why we show it as fiscal year 21, '22. The budget is an expression not only of all the work that is done by your staff and to help improve the quality of life in our community, but also the goals that are established by city council that represent the aspirations of our community. And that's why we start here with this slide. These are the five goals, one of which is a temporary goal that council has adopted, and a lot of these have carried forward over the past several years. Number one is achieving financial and economic sustainability even prior to COVID-19 that was identified as the top priority, because we cannot carry out our mission if we don't have the funds to do so. And our financial well-being is tied directly to our economic sustainability in the business community. When you have funds, you can do things like improve your public infrastructure, which are the things we rely upon to live our lives, both from a practical standpoint, but also enjoy, you know, the greater outdoors and preserve public access to those things that we love. And included in that is the things like the water reclamation facility project that we rely upon for water and sewer, as well as One Water Plan. Updating the land, city's land use plans or general plan. It's been an ongoing saga for the last six years, and really this is again to tell the community, reflect the community's values going into the future. And related to that is addressing affordable housing issues, which are quite acute in our community. And doing this in a way that we can also extend out into the community through outreach and engagement to make sure our community is involved in decisions that affect their lives. And the goal that was added temporarily this year is related to the COVID-19 pandemic, both the public health response, but also the economic response to the challenges posed by this once-in-a-hundred-year event. Next slide, please. So the theme for this year's budget is resiliency and rebounding. As the mayor identified, the city made some pretty significant changes last year in the wake of the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, taking quick action to really curtail our expenses in advance of knowing that our revenue supplies would be diminishing quite significantly. Thankfully, we've seen a pretty strong recovery and rebound in the last 12 months, primarily driven by, you know, folks investing in their small business community and spending locally, but also in the availability of allowing some tourism to occur. And our community stepping up big time in support of Measure E20, which provides another one-cent sales tax that comes directly to the city and can't be taken by the state of California. Combined with Measure Q provides new opportunities for funding. And ultimately, what that means is since we've been able to recover, thanks to the quick actions taken by the city, but also in how our small business community has been resilient throughout all the changes that occurred last year, and because of our community stepping up with funding, we're able to get our staffing levels back to pre-pandemic levels, but in a way that reflects some of the innovations that we went through with COVID-19 and doing things differently and better. We're able to invest in the things that make our staff successful. That's the equipment, whether it's vehicles, IT equipment, or tools that needed to be replaced. We're able to invest in those things, which means that we can deliver quality services and ultimately began to invest in our infrastructure, which we know the needs are quite massive and kind of span all things that we do, whether it's parks, streets, sidewalks, city facilities, restrooms, et cetera. We know there's a lot of needs out there, and we're thankful that we're able to begin investing in those things. So ultimately, we're able to also, you know, bring our emergency reserve levels back to a level that is a bit more sustainable than when we started, you know, making these really hard choices and trying to get it back to a pre-pandemic level. So again, the overall theme here is that we're in a rebounding position, and because of the investment made by our community, we're in a position where we can come out of this even stronger. And I'm so thankful that we're able to invest in our employees who made those hard choices to take pay cuts, and now we're in a position to not only reverse those pay cuts, but invest in compensation enhancements that allow us to be more competitive with our neighboring cities in the county. With that, I would again like to reiterate the words of the mayor and thank profusely Ms. Lictig for stepping into the city at a very challenging time and trying to fill really hard shoes to fill. Jen Calloway is moving on. She's done a great job. I want to thank Sandy Martin, who's retired as of a week ago, for helping with, helping Kate through this process, as well as Doug Harbottle as the interim in that position, as well as Valerie Webb, who's helped us a lot, and everybody really in the finance department who stepped up big time to help us through this transition and working nights, working weekends to get this done. So with that, I'll turn it over to Katie and take it from here. Thanks, Katie.
Good thing this is one of my last presentations, because this unmute thing just keeps befuddling me. I do want to also take the opportunity to thank some folks. As Scott said, Sandy Martin really did step up in her last month in the city. Doug Harbottle, Valerie Webb, Scott was a tremendous help. I really have enjoyed working with the entire department head team and the rest of the executive team to really create what represents the values of the City of Morro Bay as presented in dollars and cents and things that we're going to be working on in the next year. So I cherish the time that I've been able to spend with you. I appreciate the kudos, but it really does take a village to create something of this magnitude. And so on that note, I will dive in, but I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. I've made lifelong friends and really gotten the opportunity to get to know Morro Bay more, and I'm planning to stay after I finish my tour of duty here at the city. So I really appreciate that opportunity. As the mayor and Scott said, we're here to talk about the budget that's presented to you. The total city revenues are anticipated to be $148,314,294. I am going to stop using those full numbers from here on out, because that will take too long for us to move forward with. But you'll note in this slide that our revenues are predominantly associated with capital projects, and there is one major capital project that is on tap for the coming year, which is the water reclamation facility. And that's 64% of our revenue, and we're anticipating grants and loans and other types of funding to make that all possible, in addition to the surcharges and other rates that are charged to provide that service. As you can see in this chart, it's broken up. The general fund is about 10%, and again, that's based on the large investment in capital projects in the coming year. You can see on this chart that we are taking a big leap in the historical trends, and we took another leap last year with the beginning of the construction and the previous year with the planning for construction. I anticipate that that will go down drastically in the future. So when you see the next budget, that will drop precipitously, but not in a bad way like it did with COVID, but in a way that shows that we're making progress on our capital This represents the same type of distribution, but it's on the expenditure side. You'll see that we're planning to spend $145.7 million, which means that we are in a positive balance. We're in the black in total. There are no funds that are exceeding their expenditures over revenues, and so this presents you with the big picture. And I'm going to drill down on a number of different general fund analyses, as well as each of the individual enterprise funds. So let me do that dive as we start. So this is the general fund revenues by department. You'll note here that city administration has the bulk of the revenues, because the finance department is part of city administration, and we administer the largest, the five largest revenue sources in the city. Things like transient occupancy tax, which are hotel taxes, sales tax, our property tax, those are the three biggest ones, as well as our business license tax. And the fifth one is escaping me right at this very moment, but the next slide's going to help on that. You'll note that there are increases in all, except for the police department, which is a minor reduction. A lot of that has to do with what can be charged and how it can be charged, so it's not, it's fairly insignificant in the bigger scheme of things. Total general fund revenues, once we account for transfers in, which is that which we receive from the enterprise funds for the services provided by the general fund. So think of human resources, doing a recruitment for the utilities department, or the city attorney's office representing the harbor, as an example. So all of those expenses get paid for out of the general fund, and then the enterprise funds pay the general fund for those services. And that amounts to $15.5 million. And again, we'll see that the general fund is ending in a positive position. That's probably going to be true for the current fiscal year as well, and in the staff report, we identified that if there is a amount of revenue over expenditures, we're proposing that at the end of the year, which is not June 30th, but when the books are closed, that the council make a policy decision to replenish the general fund emergency reserve with that amount of money. We have made assumptions that this fiscal year, we will not need to take any money from the general fund emergency reserve. At mid-year, you'll remember, I projected that we were going to need about $671,000, but because our revenues have recovered as robustly as they have, we don't believe that any funds will be necessary for the general fund emergency reserve this year. So this is the general fund expenditure, so I thought I was getting another, more drill down on the revenues. So if anybody has a question when we get there, I can pull the fifth one out of my head, actually out of the book that's sitting next to me on my left-hand side. This indicates the expenditures in the general fund for each of the departments. We've identified all of the needs that are necessary to provide the services, either going back to the 2019, '20 fiscal year, or as city manager Collins identified, how do we implement on an ongoing and sustainable basis the innovations that we've moved forward with and enhance our capacity for analytical work for doing those innovative programs and projects? And so this represents, just to be clear, that which will be spent out of the general fund, excluding any support that's being provided to the general fund departments, or any department for that matter, with Measure Q and E. We do have a slide that shows the expenditures for the general fund, including Measure Q and E. That is a separate slide in this slide deck, so I'll get to that appropriately when we get to that slide. And here it is. So this indicates the total expenditures of the general fund for the departments, including dollars that are coming directly from the general fund, as well as Measure Q and Measure E. And that excludes any transfers that would be supporting those departments. So this shows a relatively similar distribution as without Measure Q and E, but maybe, I would say, in a larger proportion. So the police department is still the largest funding that is provided through the general fund, and it stays the highest funding through the support from Measure Q and Measure E. Because there are so many functions within the public works department, street maintenance, vehicle maintenance, tree maintenance, and so on on the slide, the smaller chart indicates the breakout of each of those functions within the expenditure budget. So of public works, 19.7% of the general fund, these make up the portion of the 19.7%. And so this is just the same information provided in a chart form or a table form instead of as a pie chart. Different people enjoy getting the data in different ways, and so it represents the same data as is presented in the pie chart previously. And that total of expenditures, including Measure E and Measure Q, is $17.4 million. And again, it was about $15.5 million in the previous just general fund, so it's about 2.5, 2. I'm sorry, $1.8 million of Measure E and Q dollars that are supporting the general fund operations. And again, there's other money going to other funds. The harbor fund is benefiting from Measure Q and E, and so this is just focused on the general fund. I wanted to present to you the positive picture associated with the general fund emergency reserve. It shows that we started in 2017, '18 at $3.27 million. We dropped at the end of fiscal year 2019, '20 to $1.76 million. Current estimate is that we will restore some of that in the current fiscal year to be at $2.3 or almost $2.4 million. And with the investments that are being made from different funds, the general fund emergency reserve would end at $3.329 million. Two things to note here. One is that there are three investments coming into the general fund emergency reserve. $125,000 from Measure Q and E, which was supported by the CPAC, as Scott mentioned. $250,000 coming from the general fund. And right now, we have programmed in the budget $500,000 coming from the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. We've read and reviewed the initial rules coming from the Treasury Department that are not applicable to the kind of city that we are. We are not an entitlement city. We receive our money through the county and through the state, I'm sorry, through the state. But we've been given indications from, through the National League of Cities, that they will likely be very similar, if not exactly the same. There's been a lot of lobbying going on with the Treasury Department to make this eligible, make a replenishment to the reserves eligible. If that turns out not to be the case, we have a plan in place that we would present to the city council. We don't have it in place, but we have it in mind to present to you a plan that would allow us to make some other purchases and support some other operations with the American Rescue Act money, and then have the funding sources that currently exist in Measure Q or Measure E or in our capital budget, basically make those contributions to the general fund emergency reserve. I hope that's clear. I'm happy to take questions when we get to that spot. I just wanted you to know that we recognize that that's a little bit of inconsistent budgeting right now with the rules, but we do recognize that, and we do have a backup plan if it's necessary. The second thing I wanted to identify is that we don't quite get to the minimum of 25%. we don't quite get to the minimum of 25%. We're about $50,000 short from that, based on the current estimates. But again, I just wanted to indicate that we think that we may end up in a better position at the end of the current year, at the end of June 2021. So our beginning fund balance for next year may be in a better position. But based on our best educated estimates right now, we will be short of the minimum, as well as being about $450,000 to $460,000 short of the target level. And just to remind everybody, because we got the question, those targets and the minimum were set by council directive. They're changeable by council directive. We've talked about it before. I wouldn't recommend reducing those numbers. But if the council desired, it certainly could increase those numbers if it felt like that was a prudent and appropriate thing to do. Wanted to give a picture of what's happening with staffing. We're basically adding 10 positions back in. In many instances, it's restoring positions that were eliminated in the current fiscal year in the response to the pandemic. Basically, we're going back to a 2018-19 level of funding. We had 99.7 back in 1819, and we're going to be at 98.1. So it's comparable to that level of staffing. So I'm going to do a quick overview of each of the department budgets, their accomplishments, their projects. I'm not going to go through all the detail that's on each of the slides, but I just wanted to highlight the good work that is being done by each of the departments, what they're hoping to do next year, and just a budget glance, so that you'll get a chance, and the community will get a chance.
Before we jump into that, Mayor or Council, would you want to entertain questions on a general overview before jumping into departments? Or do you keep going?
I think we could keep going. And go ahead when you're through with departmental overviews. Open it up.
Sounds good. Give me a chance to take a little drink. Thanks.
Sure, you bet.
So we're going to start with the police department. You've heard about many of these accomplishments through council presentations. They are, knock on wood, at least until sometime in June or July, fully staffed. But they're also in the process of hiring new police officers and new staff for their support services. They responded to multiple significant incidents over the course of the last year, including an active shooter, and protests, and the pandemic. And again, they've done a valiant job of assisting with the security plans and the background investigations for the two new cannabis outlets, which has led to some of the positive outcomes associated with revenue coming into the city. For next year, they're planning to evaluate key and effective tools for crime prevention and gun safety. And they're very much looking forward to the speed survey being conducted and able to be implemented. The police department will have 21.38 full-time equivalents. It's basically restoring the department to the 2019-20 level. And their total budget, including Measure Q and E, will be $4,345,000 and a little bit more. And so that's the overview for the police department. The fire department responded in real time to an evolving COVID-19 pandemic. And I think I could say that across the board for all the departments. And I didn't put it in all their presentations. I'm astounded by how much your team of dedicated city staff people have done to respond, and how tremendous they've been in terms of doing all of the right things in all the right times to respond. They've responded to, the fire department responded to mutual aid requests, 13 incidents, 2,633 staff hours. And we have received, or will receive, full reimbursement, plus the administrative overhead for that. And they've also hopped in with both feet to support the county for the three vaccination sites. Next year, they're planning to help with the Vistra Battery Plant, Storage Plant project, and reviewing that. Probably should have been in the police department's key projects. It probably could be in every department's key projects, given the scope and scale of that project. Again, they will be assisting with the onboarding of the new fire chief as Chief Knuckles goes off into retirement. And they'll be working with the harbor department on the redevelopment of the fire boat operations. The fire department will have 15 full-time equivalent positions. This is in addition of one full-time firefighter engineer. That's an increase of 1.25. The 2.5 is for the administrative technician, who will be going from 0.75 to a full-time equivalent. And their budget, including Measure Q and E, is $3.4 million. Our public works department has so many functions that I wanted to outline what the functions were before I hopped into the accomplishments and the projects. Management and leadership of all of the department functions, engineering, capital project design, bidding, construction oversight, development review of private projects, maintenance of city assets, which include parks, buildings, restrooms, streets, curbs, sidewalks, street trees, city vehicles, medians, right-of-way, one traffic signal, which I'm very curious which that one is, street lighting and storm drains, a robust environmental programs department, or programs that include water conservation, oversight of our contract refuse collection and recycling provision of, whoops, there's a typo, provision of safe drinking water, not just W, collection, treatment, and disposal of wastewater, a transit program, and administration of two assessment districts. And I'm just tired reading that list. I'm sure that everybody can appreciate the breadth and depth of responsibilities that the public works department has. Accomplishments, they completed the Stormwater Pocahontas Park on the waterfront. And they launched the Trash Heroes Program. And it's really working. In terms of additional accomplishments, I did one slide, all of accomplishments, and then one slide of next year's key projects. They continued the transit service in downtown along the waterfront, even in the face of COVID. The hot asphalt truck, asphalt truck, was converted to an environmentally friendly emulsion material, which is not petroleum-based. And so this is something that's good in terms of the aroma that you smell when you go by. But most of all, it's important that it's not a petroleum product. And they supported the COVID-19 pandemic response with extra cleanings of restroom, provision of hand washing stations, portable bathrooms, distribution of many of the hand sanitizer locations as well. Key projects is, first and foremost, implementing our pavement, storm drain, and other infrastructure projects. The demolition of the Coleman Park restroom and the construction of that restroom. They plan to conduct a pollutant load reduction modeling to see how we're doing in terms of our education and outreach for pollutant and trash reductions. Take a minute. Sorry about that. Obviously, there'll be oversight of the Wharf construction, construction of one water project, such as rehabilitation of six water tanks. We have to implement SB 1383, which is intended to increase recycling and green waste diversions and food diversions, which is no small undertaking. And we will be preparing for the commissioning and use of the Wharf. This is an overview of the entire department. 35 FTE in total. It's broken up by the public works functions, and then the utilities functions. It's, again, partially restoring to the 2019-20 level. For the general fund, including Measure Q and E funding, it's about $3.1 million. For the water fund, just the operating, not the capital or the replacement, vehicle replacement or equipment replacement, is $14.7 million. And in the sewer fund, the operating budget is $35.5 million. Again, this does not represent the capital project of the Wharf. We're anticipating spending $88.8 million on the Wharf in the coming year. And that's represented in the capital budget. Our community development department has been hard at work on the general plan and the local coastal program via Plan Morro Bay. And we're anticipating that being adopted, maybe even later today. The zoning code update was approved by the planning commission. We've purchased Dog Beach. A really big achievement is getting the housing element approved by the state of California, and that was accomplished this year. Next year, the general plan and local coastal plan will be certified, fingers crossed, by the coastal commission. The energy project will be in the development review process. The zoning code is anticipated to be adopted by the city council. Implementation of the housing element and process planning and/or building permit of 100-room hotel project. So again, reinvesting in that process. I know that there's hard work going on as it relates to reengineering the development review process. And I'm sure that there'll be accomplishments related to that in the next fiscal year. The community development department has six hard-working FTEs people working in the department. This is a restoration of the 1920 level with the addition of an assistant planner position. And it's about a $1 million general fund department in our budget. The harbor department has been hard at work on major redevelopment of Rose's Landing and the House of Juju lease sites. They responded to major impacts due to COVID-19 pandemic. It's been articulated to me that it was the biggest summer that the Embarcadero and the Rock have ever seen. And so they have been trying to respond and meet all of the health requirements along with their regular day-to-day operations. They've striped the Rock parking lot, and they have now implemented a better marking system that will hopefully maximize availability to that beach and other areas along the Embarcadero and the waterfront. Key projects for next year include the assessment of the RV camping program, the evaluation of options related to financial sustainability of the harbor fund, evaluating options for the management of the Tideland Trust lease sites, and whether that's better done by internal staff or whether there's another option, and collaborating with partners inside the city on the Wind Castle Wind Farm, sorry, Castle Wind Wind Farm. Say that three times fast. And the Vistra Battery Storage Project. The harbor department, and this is only full-time permanent employees, and we'll be updating the information in the budget book for the adopted budget, is six FTE. Our lifeguard program gets started this weekend. And so obviously, we have a lot of part-time folks who work a part-time of the year. They may work full-time, but they work a part-time of the year. So this doesn't represent the totality of the hard-working folks who keep the harbor clean and safe and enjoyable for all of our public. It's, again, essentially restoring to the 1920 levels. I will say that there was no reduction in the full-time equivalent positions. And so that might be a little bit of a misnomer in the sense that it has stayed constant since 2019-20. And right now, again, the operating budget is $2.1 million for the harbor fund. Recreation Services, I pulled that out of administration because they've been so significantly impacted by COVID. And they have a separate section in the budget book. Accomplishments is they managed the Morro Bay Cares Connects Program during COVID-19. The program provided some essential services to some of the people who are most in need in our community. They, again, provided vital information during COVID-19 pandemic. They were the primary portal for information for people who were calling on the phone. They provided distance learning support through a partnership with the San Luis Coastal Unified School District throughout COVID-19, once kids were allowed to, and we implemented distance learning. And they provided access to the pool to provide healthy and well-being options according to health guidelines from the county. Next year, they'll continue to provide high-quality after-school programs and access to the pool. They're planning to reactivate other programs, as allowed by health guidelines and staff capacity. One issue of note, and this is true throughout the county, we're having a hard time recruiting staff for some of those programs. And so we may not necessarily be prevented from starting those programs, but some logistical challenges might continue to exist that would prevent us from a full rollout. We'd also be providing access and rental of city facilities, as allowed by health guidelines. And so, again, that could be limited by our staffing capabilities. But other than that, we're planning to ramp up to get that started. So the Recreation Services Department is getting 3.75. That is a restoration of a portion of their losses in 2020-21. So they're getting a 0.75 recreation supervisor and a 1.0 administrative technician added to their staff. And again, we'll add temporary staff hours and that information to the adopted budget. Their budget is about $817,000. And they're anticipating an increase in their revenues this year. So that is a positive sign for the programs that they're offering. The administration department, oh, I have a Mike Pence fly. Sorry about that. Is made up, sorry. So is made up of a number of different functions. It includes the city manager's office, the city attorney's office, the city clerk's risk management, HR, finance, and IT. And so I've tried to streamline the presentation, so there's not going to be presentations on all of those functions. So I've tried to bundle it up in a concise manner. The team supported the efforts to provide education about the sales tax measure, heroically responded to COVID-19 and the resulting financial crises. Part of that was, as Scott mentioned, the implementation of the financial crisis plan. But it's also the administration of the small grants that were, the grants that were given to small businesses. The city clerk's office helped to conduct a successful mayoral and council election. Our HR team managed to, we hope, successfully negotiate with three bargaining groups. And hopefully, that will be on a future agenda of the city council to ratify. And then what's not on here is I do want to give a huge shout out to the finance team. They really have had to deal with quite a bit of change in their operation. They really have had to deal with quite a bit of change in their operations, in their leadership, and so I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you to all of them for continuing to provide exceptional customer service, even at a time when we were reduced in staff and we were being asked to do more with less. So kudos to the finance team. Focus for the coming year for all of us will be financial sustainability of all city funds, with an emphasis on the Harbor Fund. The transition of the T-Bid to a nonprofit board will happen in the next fiscal year. Economic recovery from the COVID pandemic, which includes implementing innovations and reengineering the processes. And so we'll be partnering both Finance and the City Manager's Office with the other departments to help support them in those efforts. There'll be high-level monitoring of construction of the WRF, and we'll manage an assessment of city assets to develop a long-term, long-range investment plans for things like our vehicles, our IT equipment, our buildings, which don't currently exist. We do have -- our pavement management system has a long-term plan for that, and this ties back into financial sustainability, because we don't have the funding to fully take care of all of those assets, and so prioritizing, making sure we understand what the needs are, is a first step in that process. Our Administration Department has 11 full-time equivalent positions. I would say it's partially restored to the 1920 level, and we've made some additional changes that we're moving forward with. So as an example, in the Finance Department, we're adding an Administrative Services Analyst that can help with those high-level projects that are complex, multi-departmental, multi-partnered. So in the Harbor Department, in the -- to look at the financial options or to look at the cost-benefit analysis of continuing to manage the leases in-house. And so we're hoping to really enhance our ability to maximize our effectiveness and efficiency with the addition of that new staff person. Both for Finance and Information Technology, we have seven FTEs. Again, we're partially restored. I wanted to break this out because we do have the IT Fund that is part of the oversight responsibility of the Administrative Services Director, Assistant City Manager. We, in the General Fund, are supported by $965,000, and the IT Fund is $712,000, which supports the IT technician and a portion of the Administrative Services Director's time and attention, as well as providing service for the rest of the departments, typically on contract services. I wanted to take a step and talk about Measure Q and E, and I may have left these a little out of order, but as we get through it, you'll go with the flow with me, I hope. Measure Q and E, we are anticipating getting a total of $3.302 million in the next year. It's broken out by Measure Q, which is a half cent, and Measure E, which is a full cent or full percentage. You'll note that we're planning to spend more than what will come in next year, and that's because we have been unable to spend on projects that we anticipated being able to spend on in the last -- in the current fiscal year. And so we're using some of that fund balance, a substantial part of that fund balance, to get some additional projects done, which includes more contribution to the pavement program, investments in our storm drain program, which is also supported by the General Fund investment in that project to get it to $600,000, and then also investment in the Highway 141 interchange intersection improvements. And so I'm sure that there'll be further conversations about some of these or all of them, but we did adopt a planning methodology that was in line with the Council's principles that was adopted in April, so that each of these expenditures is directly tied to the expenditure priority that the Council had identified. Wanted to provide the Council and the community with an indication of how much Measure Q and E dollars were being invested in each of the departments. So -- and these are operating expenses, not capital expenses, except where there's debt service involved. So for the Police Department, it's $570,000. Fire Department is $818,000. For the Public Works Department, it's $469,000. And I just wanted to highlight that the $175 at the top isn't identified for a specific use as of now. We put it in contract services, but if the new Public Works Director decides that that's more appropriate to be allocated to personnel, then the team will come back to the Council and get that reallocated and FTE added to the budget. Excuse me. And then in our Harbor operating is both the personnel as well as the solid waste disposal, which is the -- the first is the lifeguard program, the second is the solid waste disposal, and then the last one is firefighting equipment that will be collaborated on by the Harbor as well as the Fire Department. So all of the dollars that are going into departments, including the Fire Department's overtime that gets transferred into the General Fund, is $2 million, about $2.1 million. The American Rescue Plan Act, as I mentioned, we're planning to make a variety of expenditures in the coming year. We anticipate getting $990,000 in the current fiscal year, although we've not heard anything lately from the state, because it has to flow through the state, about the timing of that. So whatever way you look at it, we have planned for the expenditures next fiscal year, not this fiscal year. We're planning to purchase two police vehicles, one fire command vehicle, a variety of fire equipment acquisitions, some ground maintenance supplies, some contractual services to do -- I believe that that's for sidewalk replacement. We're planning to buy some equipment that can be used by our existing staff in the consolidated maintenance. We're planning to purchase a Harbor truck for the lifeguard program. There's an investment in a backup generator in City Hall. This was particularly relevant when our server farm was located in City Hall, which is about to move over to an essential facility, but given the experience of needing to be available and to work on disasters, it seems prudent to invest in a generator. And then some equipment that would allow staff to work remotely. We have had a process of replace when it breaks with IT equipment, and this would be a proactive investment in laptops and other types of equipment that could be used both in the office as well as off-site, if there was a need to use it off-site. And then, as you see here, the $500,000, and again, we'll determine whether that's consistent with Treasury guidelines as soon as we can, and if it is not, then we'll bring back an alternative at the budget adoption. Our Capital Improvement Plan is robust, as I mentioned earlier. The WRF is 91% of that which we will be spending. This chart gives you an indication that we'll be spending a variety of different amounts on different types of expenditures, like water line replacements. We'll be making some investments down at the Harbor as well as transit. And we can review any of those projects if there are questions on them. So the key question for the Council today is, do you have any input or direction on the proposed operating capital Measure Q and E budgets in anticipation of June 22 budget adoption? And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Katie. We'll let you take a drink of water.
Thank you, I apologize.
Get rid of that fly. No, 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 get rid of that fly. We don't want you to get consumed by that -- I think you called it the Mike Pence fly. So thank you for an excellent overview and presentation. We do appreciate that. And I particularly want to thank you for the clarity by which you provided the overview to the city. I failed to acknowledge earlier the significant work done by the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee, or CFAC as we call it. Attached to your agenda item were a number of significant questions asked by the CFAC members and the answers provided by staff. They do provide, I think, excellent insight into some of the major questions that Council may have for staff as well. So hopefully you've had the chance to review that, but I wanted to call that to the attention of the public as well. And so this is the time for any questions or comments regarding the budget presentation. This is, again, one of two sessions, the second of which will be tomorrow, May 26, at 3:00 PM as well. With that, I will go ahead and, let's see, flip a coin here, start with Councilmember Heller, and ask Councilmember Heller, do you have specific questions regarding either the general budget, the other funds such as Harbor and/or Water Fund, and Measure Q and E-related questions? Sir, thank you.
As a matter of fact, I do. Thank you, Mayor.
I figured you might.
I'd be remiss if I didn't have some questions. First, I want to echo what you said, Mayor, regarding Katie. The work you've done is just fantastic, and your staff is just remarkable. The entire budget package that you put together is clear, succinct, and the formatting is outstanding, and I can't say enough. I mean, in a normal year, this would be a great report, but that you've created this in extremely difficult financial challenging conditions is quite remarkable, and my hat goes off to you, as well as your staff. And CFAC, of course, it's a great advisory committee with just a lot of really smart people, and their contribution is significant, and I don't think we can ignore all the department heads who, you know, inputted the information that's in this binder, which is so complete and will be of great use to the Council and the Mayor for the coming year, without doubt in the community as well. And of course, we can't forget our City Manager, Scott Collins, who is leading the charge for all of this, so hats off to all of you for just a great, great work in this past fiscal year. Questions I have, first off, starting with respect to the American Rescue Plan. I had the understanding that we would be getting $990,000 this year to help us with our General Fund, and it looks like the numbers you said are just getting $500,000. Did I miss something? Am I misunderstanding that?
Yeah, the -- yep. $500,000, we had programmed -- we're planning to program $990,000 to receive it this year and another $990,000 next year, so the total receipt would be $1.98 million. We've anticipated the revenue of $990,000 to come in this fiscal year, but not to spend it until next fiscal year, and so we've allocated and appropriated, once you adopt the budget, almost all of that $990,000. And then we anticipated that the second $990,000 would either get programmed at mid-year next year or with the budget next year. So the $500,000 is just the amount that we're planning, that we propose to go to the General Fund Emergency Reserve, and then there were a whole number of other allocations for police vehicles and fire vehicles and Harbor vehicles that were included in the ARPA money.
Okay, that explains that. Thank you very much for that. Next question is, let's see, very happy about your projections for revenue. We really have been, all things considered, extremely fortunate as a community, I think, to ride out this pandemic, and it looks like we're coming out on the good side of all of this, which is very fortunate and not something anyone could have predicted. So I'm very happy about those projections and certainly hope that they come true. And looking at staffing for administration, this is on page C8, it looks to me like we don't -- we have not budgeted for a Finance Director. Am I making a mistake in my assessment of that? That's page C8, and what are we going to do when you leave?
We are. The title changed, the Council agreed to make the title change to Administrative Services Director, Assistant City Manager. So in that page, it shows zero for the Finance Director, but one for the Administrative Services Director.
So they'll be assuming those duties?
Yes.
Well, it's the CM duties.
On June 23, as a matter of fact.
Okay. I would also like to acknowledge the legal firm providing city services for taking a 10% discount on their invoices for a significant period of time, which very much appreciated. I want to acknowledge them. What else here? This is something I've talked about before, and I'm just wondering, as we kind of move forward into open meetings again, hopefully, one of my kind of biggest concerns is the Vets Hall and the unfortunate orientation of the screen and other IT issues. And is there any funding in this budget for upgrading either the Vets Hall or moving the facilities to the community center, so we're a little more into the 20th century, let alone not the 21st century?
Yes, there is funding associated with that project. I am not familiar with the exact page, but I can certainly look for it, and--
That's okay. I just -- I couldn't find it, so if you tell me it's in there, I believe you.
And if Mr. Lively is -- I see that he's on the call. I don't know whether he can get to it more quickly than I can. Anyways, I'll find it for you.
Okay.
Councilmember Heller.
If it's in there, that's fine. I don't need to--
I don't have the exact page number, but I believe it's about $148,000 in capital improvements for, including structural improvements for the Vets Hall, upgrade to electrical and AV systems.
Yeah, it's on page I, five of the capital budget section, Councilmember Heller. It's under the summary for all the projects, but I think it's -- it kind of doesn't show up really well, but that number is what I see in there, is about $148,000.
Yeah, and then there's also a more substantial write-up further back.
Right. And then, real quick, the plan is we're currently working with AGP on a couple different options, to aid allow for eventual hybrid meetings, but also thinking longer term about just the overall orientation for eventual in-person-only kind of meetings. So I think we're trying to have it both ways, where we can do some kind of tie-in for a hybrid and then make the global changes that are necessary for in-person meetings.
And then are we considering possibly moving all of that technology to the community center? center, or is that...
Yeah, that's part of the discussion. I think there's some hurdles involved with that, but we're looking at the whole thing together.
Okay, great, great, okay.
I did find the page, it's page I58.
I knew you would. Thank you. And before I forget, our city clerk does such a great job, and when you look at the accomplishments over the past year and what our city clerk and her staff do, it's quite impressive. So I didn't want to forget about her. In looking at the, what page am I looking at here now? The police department revenues, so showing revenue sources for the police department at about $240,000. What is the source of those revenues? If you or perhaps Chief Cox could help me with that, primary source?
I'm happy to respond, Chief Cox, but I also don't want to step on anybody's toes.
Absolutely, go ahead, Katie.
Okay.
And I'll fill in if need be.
And I'm probably doing the same thing that he is, but I know that there are costs associated, or revenues associated with, the major is the cost of services, or the charges for services, and honestly, I'd have to go and dig into the worksheet. We could provide you with more details.
Yeah, a lot of those are cost recovery on, like cannabis backgrounds. We've done probably 60 of those. Some of that comes back from post-reimbursement, from training courses, things of that nature.
Okay, okay, I'm just curious about that. Thank you, thank you for that. Moving along here. So, you know, the concept of full cost recovery, I know we've discussed, and we paid a consultant to come up with those numbers, and looking at this, maybe I'm reading this wrong, but for instance, Rec and Park, and I love that department, and I think Kirk does an outstanding job as the head of that department, but it looks to me like if I'm looking at it right, we're still not at a full cost recovery position for Recs and Park. Is that true? Am I looking at that correctly? Looks like revenues of $655 and expenditures of $817.
Yes, and I see that the city attorney's popped in. Let me give it a try, Chris, and then you can, you know, full cost recovery is a policy choice. It's not unusual for cities to decide that there are some services that they want to subsidize. It is true that your Parks and Rec programs are not fully cost recovering. Some of them may be, some of them may not be. I think that as the new Administrative Services Director gets on board, and the next FE study is done, which is typically done every five to seven years, and I believe that this one was done in 2018 or 2019, so it's a periodic thing. So I would say that it's not unusual for Recs and Parks programs not to be full cost recovery. You're correct that it is not full cost recovery, and that's a policy decision. And now I've seen that also the city manager has popped up on the screen.
So we're getting some attention from...
I'm going to be quiet now.
From several people. Who wants to chime in?
Yeah, Katie, a good job. Yes, the council had a policy that predated the recent FE study, which is sort of a pyramid of, you know, where you seek full cost recovery and where you don't, in a sliding scale fashion. And, you know, for the more kind of vulnerable or higher needs populations, a higher subsidy, if you will. So youth programming and senior services had, you know, expectation of trying to recover about 70% of costs. We have programs that sort of span all generations that we seek full cost recovery on. And then there are some functions within recreation administration that you really can't allocate to a user, they're sort of inherent in doing administrative work, that you can't, you couldn't reasonably charge out to a service. So that's how you get to that level, but Kirk's team has done a good job of reevaluating programming. And, you know, while we have those targets we can hit, we also want to stay competitive with our neighbors in terms of what we charge for certain activities that where there's choice, if that makes sense. So it's a bit of all those things mixed together that lead to that number, but Kirk is always refining that. And for instance, our junior guard program, we've moved that up quite a bit because we know the demand is at like a highest level possible, and we probably weren't charging the right amount.
I don't mean to pick on Kirk, per se.
Yeah.
Chris, did you want to jump in and say something?
I agree with everything that finance director and city manager related here, and I just wanted to point out, since they did such a good job with explaining this, that I think it's useful to think in terms of, while the city certainly has the ability to, as a policy choice, engage in a significant amount of cost recovery, and the city has been, you know, pursuing that, usually, and my understanding is this is the spirit and moral bay with the council, you look at something like Parks and Rec as different, say, from a private developer coming in. And so if a private developer, you know, is proposing to create some sort of commercial establishment, frankly, they have the money to, you know, engage in 100% cost recovery, but as the city manager articulated, it's a policy decision to, for example, with youth and seniors, to subsidize. If council, of course, wanted to engage in full cost recovery in Parks and Rec, which is not something a lot of cities do, you know, of course, the law would allow us to pursue it in that direction, but my understanding is that, you know, manager Carmichael has, you know, done everything consistent with council direction, and, you know, that would be a policy choice. But generally speaking, you know, Parks and Rec versus commercial development, you know, can they pay or can they not, is how a lot of cities, you know, develop their policies on this.
Gotcha. I understand that. And Kirk, I apologize, it wasn't aimed at you, it was more of a general question.
No problem here, sir.
And because you're doing a nice, sticky job.
One more thing, oops, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt the phrase of Kirk.
As long as the fly's gone, go ahead.
Yeah, the fly's gone. I just wanted to add that there is a distinction between programs and renting a facility. So renting a facility, you can achieve market rates, as opposed to providing a program, which is cost recovery. So just, there was some discussion at one point about renting, the cost of renting a facility, and that is not dictated by the same policies as providing a program.
Okay. Yeah, those are my questions. I know other people probably have plenty, so I will stop there, but thank you again, Katie, and Scott Collins, and all department heads, specifically Kirk, for doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Appreciate that very much. Let's go ahead, Councilmember Addis, questions for staff? More comments?
Yeah, I do have a few, and I appreciate, well, number one, I want to say thank you to Katie, and I'm glad to hear that you're going to stay in Morro Bay, and thank you to the hard work of staff for putting this all together during incredibly challenging times, so that doesn't go unnoticed. And I also want to thank Councilmember Heller for bringing up the conversation about Rec and Park. I remember distinctly having a conversation about fees and how we approach that, and feeling like folks who use the services of Rec and Park are important members of our community, and not viewing that as charity so much as viewing that as a way that we can serve our community. And so I appreciate that we're still thinking about how we serve our full community through our Rec and Park department, and I'm hopeful that we get those services back in place. And one more thank you to CFAC. I know the work that it takes for CFAC to go through this budget, and I'm just elated for the first time ever in serving our city to see a budget that feels optimistic and feels like we're going to get some things done. It's just, and I think we owe a huge thank you to our community for passing both Measure Q a few years ago, but also Measure E, which is going to help us do quite a few things moving forward. In terms of my questions, I did email a number of those, and I'm not going to ask them again, but I am interested in knowing a little bit, like maybe a glimpse, of what we might see in the five-year projections when those come, if it's going to be this optimistic for those five-year projections, or if we will still need to focus on revenue generation. So that's sort of one part of my question. And then the other part is, if we do need to focus on revenue generation, if we could just have a very brief update, not a staff report, but a verbal update, either as part of this meeting or the next meeting, on where else we can go in terms of cannabis, paid parking, camping, catalyst sites, Vistra, wind energy, and anything else that could be a possibility for revenue generation. That whole list is things that we've been working on for a couple years. The only thing that dropped off the list is possible sales tax. And again, thank you to the residents of Morro Bay for passing that sales tax. So we would just love to hear kind of what's in store for us as we go into the future, whether that's this meeting or, you know, bringing that back for next meeting.
Well, I can give you a sense, it's a little more of a, what I'll call a gut check, than one that's based on an analytical, you know, process that I've been through. My sense of things is, is that the needs are so great, particularly related to capital projects, that the level of growth that you'll see over the course of the next five years will not be sufficient to be able to afford the type of investment in street paving and investments down potentially on the Barcadero, if there are general fund expenditures in partnership with the harbor fund, the storm drain maintenance, vehicle replacement for city vehicles, IT replacement for city infrastructure, information technology infrastructure. So my gut is that you'll see a plateau of ability to pay for things that we can pay for, but there will still be a vast crevasse, if you will, of need created between the dollars that we will have versus the dollars that we need. So again, it's just a gut instinct, but I don't really see, if we really need $2 million a year to pave our streets, I don't see that coming from typical growth in the existing types of revenues that you have without doing something significant. Now, you do have the capability, right now, the cannabis tax is set at 5%, and the top rate is 10%. So that can be done by the council without any, just by, I believe, I don't remember if it's by resolution or by ordinance, the city attorney can hop in and clarify that. But, so that is something that's possible in the short term. And again, I've seen the city manager and the city attorney pop up, so I'm going to be quiet now.
Yeah, Chris, I could, if you want to, I can give a broad overview on all those revenue ideas, and then turn to you for the cannabis, if that's okay?
Sure.
And Mayor, this will only take a couple minutes, is that all right by you as far as the meeting flow?
Absolutely.
Okay, great, great. Yes, so the cannabis is a pretty big opportunity. As Mr. Lookdig mentioned, you know, our tax rate is set at 5%. At the moment, the community has given us leeway up to 10%. I believe that Grover Beach is evaluating their current tax rate of 5%, that they have the leeway to go up higher, I don't know where they're going to land. In addition, they're considering onsite consumption opportunities in their, within their community. That's something that the city of Morro Bay could consider. Further, council's given some broad direction to look at different components of the industry that could be allowed to occur here, like testing or manufacturing, so there's potential opportunity for that as well. You know, we have two sites open and operating, retail sites, and both are doing extremely well. That's the cap that we're allowed under the current ordinance, and I would not suggest increasing that number until we've had time to really assess how these two are functioning together, before we do something like that. So there's definitely areas to improve or enhance in that new industry. The paid parking or parking study is still in the works, and we've gotten another draft back from the consultants, who did an assessment last summer and fall. And according to their latest draft, there definitely is an opportunity to improve the overall parking capacity in the waterfront specifically, by use of parking management techniques, one of which would, could be paid parking. The intent there isn't necessarily to make money so much as to help drive economic vitality. That is, you deal with people who park there all day long, you help move them into other parts, other free parking areas, and you use those vital parking spaces for customers of businesses, but you still have, leave room for free access to other folks who aren't necessarily there to shop, but are there to enjoy the overall experience. And also the Morro Bay Rock, of course, the Morro Rock is an opportunity for paid parking as well. There's a lot of things to assess within that. Of course, the Coastal Commission would weigh heavily in that area, particularly understanding that we are a location for folks on lower economic strata to come here and enjoy the coastline, so we want to be thinking about that, and also different opportunities for our locals to park at maybe a different rate. So those things need to be explored, and I think we want to first start off with stakeholders, and then work through the typical city process of going to Public Works Advisory Board and the HAB, and then the city council. So hopefully, moving in that territory in the next month or so. Opportunity sites, there are many in Morro Bay. You identified the battery project, or potential for one, at the now decommissioned power plant site. You know, they've submitted a project, which we'll move through the process. Our understanding preliminarily is that that could bring in upwards of $400,000 to $500,000 a year in additional property taxes to the city, which would make a huge dent in that capital needs section that Katie identified a few minutes ago. We just learned today that the Biden administration has worked out a deal between Department of Interior and Department of Defense to allow for offshore wind development. This was a two-year effort to work with Navy specifically about strategic initiatives and making it work out there in the water. So that is a very promising development as of today, and there's a lot of steps to take between now and anything actually occurring out there, but it potentially could be a lease of that, those sites, within the next six months or so. That's a longer-term horizon, and to see that through, that's maybe five to 10 years out, but still very promising. And the battery project would, could be two to three or four years out, just to give you a sense of timing, if that were to move forward. And then we have the hotel project that has been approved by council, that over by the high school, 83-room hotel, more of a mid-range hotel, that could bring in a lot of transit occupancy tax. And of course, we still have the potential redevelopment of the Market Street Plaza project, or site, which could bring in additional transit occupancy tax. So there are definitely some things out in the near future that could enhance our revenue base without having to ask residents for more money. So that hopefully gives you a sense of kind of what our opportunities are, but as Katie identified, overall, we, our capital needs are always going to exceed what we have available, and that's by having a new Public Works Director, Greg Pollock, and bringing on a new Assistant City Manager, their focus will be figuring out how to bring that package forward for consideration by council, and think about priorities, and look at different ways of financing those needs. And Chris, sorry, sorry, I'm going to turn it over to you just on that cannabis issue.
Sure. So in short, the voters in 2018 approved a maximum cannabis tax rate of 10% of proceeds, and expressly authorized the council to approve a lower rate. Council did approve a lower rate of 5% in the past. Council has... Council has the authority to increase it or to decrease it.
I think that's all my questions, Mayor, unless there's anything on camping, if there's any, and there might be nothing to add in terms of camping as revenue generation.
All right. Thank you for the reminder. I haven't written that one down. Currently, we're still in the pilot phase of the RV camping program. As of now, we have three spots where there, three general areas where it's occurring, Coleman Beach, the Triangle Parking Lot in, out by Morro Creek. And taking total, there's 18 or 19 spaces. We are going to pursue the Rock Parking Lot after consultation with our local tribes and just concerns about that. So as of now, it's still in the pilot phase, and we will be coming back to council soon to discuss the future of that program. Eric might have a sense of where things lie in terms of revenue. Eric, if you want to chime in on that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have exact, well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have exact numbers on me. I could go grab something and swing back to you here in the next few minutes, but, you know, we've, it's pretty well met expectations. I want to say when I brought it back to you previously, when we looked at it earlier, we were in the $30-ish thousand range, 30, 35,000. I think in this year's budget, July through September, I estimated $40,000 in revenues, just for this fiscal year, because we've, you know, council said go through September and then bring it back. Where are we going to meet that? I'm not sure. We're in open discussions right now on the Coleman Sites and, you know, at least right now, it looks like things are getting booked up pretty well, so we're looking on target. Katie, maybe she's got a true today number to chime in on?
I would have to run the numbers in the system, so I can do that for tomorrow.
No need on my end. If it's coming back, send to council.
Okay.
No need to spend time on that by any means. That's all from me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Very much appreciated. Councilmember Barton, questions or comments?
Yes, like everyone else, I'd like to thank Katie also for a very clearly written document. It was so easy to follow. I really appreciated that. I honed in on a couple of little capital questions early on, since that's sort of my thing. I was looking at the, at the beginning, there were a couple of things. One is State Route 1 and 41 interchange, and I'm curious about how much we're short for our share. And somewhere in here, I came across an idea about pursuing I-Bank funding for that, and I thought that was, that was an excellent thought, because then it would be, could be a large loan that would, would help us through this project. The other question I had had to do with electric vehicle stations. I saw that we had a couple of them proposed in here, and I guess I'm just curious, I don't, they're popping up everywhere, and I'm just curious, what do we get for, I think it was Do you know how, what does that turn into? Is that three stations? Is that 10?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Mr. Leivik to hop in on this one.
Thank you, Councilperson Barton. The grant from, it's 40% funded by the Air Police Control District, and that buys us two locations on the Embarcadero with a total of six spots to charge from. So four kind of near GAFCO, and then two near the restroom next to the Harbor Office is where they propose to be located.
Well, that's great. Thank you for pursuing that.
Yes, thank you.
That's, that's all for me, Mayor.
And then, Rob, could you respond to the question about the Highway 1-41 intersection improvements?
Sure. The project as envisioned would be to construct either a signal or the recommended alternative, which would be a roundabout at the location, for somewhere at the engineer's estimate of about $8.3 million. Regional money coming into that project pays for about half of that project. The city's share is about $4.5 million to fully fund that project and to deliver that within the next few years. The Slocog, our, the MPO, our regional funding partner, has tried to bring additional dollars to that project. For example, if we were successful in our ATP grant application for funding a portion of that project, they perhaps could deliver more funding for that project. As we all know, the, the transportation needs in the region are much greater than the funding that's available. Funding options are fairly limited for transportation projects, and I think I'm the one that brought up, perhaps we could leverage an annual expenditure either from our sales tax revenue or from the general fund to retire the debt through an I-Bank loan. What might be a way to deliver the project?
Well, again, thank you for pursuing the possibilities.
And, Rob, I'm sorry, did I miss, it's about $4.4 million right now?
About $4.5 million. It would be the city's share, oh, that's, that's kind of fluid. If there is additional regional money that Slocog could deliver to the project, they would work with the city to reduce that amount. Like I said, there, there are more transportation needs in the county than there is funding available.
Sure, sure. I just wanted to make sure we talked about the cap or the lid, if you will.
Right, and we're in discussion with Slocog staff that, you know, that this year, more than any year in the past, they're looking to try to consolidate funds to get projects done. They've had a lot, their top 10 projects are sitting in the top 10 position for quite some time without, you know, shovels going in the ground. And so this year in particular, they're looking to see that the agencies that are slotted for funding show commitment of their own. And this was a subject of a lot of discussion at the CFAC meeting last week, and wanting to understand if the city's committing, you know, $600,000 from Metro Q fund balance this year to help assist complete the planning and design phase of this project, you know, where is the rest of the money going to come from to satisfy the remaining gap? Fantastic question. As Rob alluded to, there are options available, but that would mean using other funds, that we could do other things for, to assign those to the roundabout or signal, depending on what direction we go. You know, Slocog is represented that, you know, they believe they could probably find a way to fund the other half of the remaining gap. But that's just staff to staff. It's a political organization like the city, and, you know, there are those at the board level who make those decisions. But again, the predilection is to move towards getting things done. So if the city steps forward with what's proposed in the draft budget, there's a high likelihood this project will actually get completed and have more funds thrown at it from Slocog. Okay, thanks, Scott. Appreciate that. Thank you, Councilmember Barton, for those questions. Councilmember Davis, sir, questions are coming?
Yes, thank you very much. If I might add a little bit to the roundabout question, the most recent conversation that we had with Slocog staff is that they are willing to stand by their original commitment to pay half the cost of construction, provided that the city pays its share. So they are willing to increase their capital commitment up to $2 million, which would leave the city with the remaining half of that capital outlay. The thing that struck me about this year's budget document was how quickly I was able to read it. I think this is about the third year in a row that we have used this format, which makes it extremely easy to read and grasp, and for that, I am grateful to our city staffs. Thank you for, for doing this. And I want to, thank you for answering my question about ransomware. I want to ask a little more focused question. It's my understanding that the usual way that hackers gain access to a system is by enticing an employee to click on a link. And in your, our, our, one of our security measures is web filtering that prevents staff from accessing potentially dangerous websites. Is that, is that something that is very effective? Is it?
Thanks for the question. I believe that it doesn't deal with that because, but I need to double check, so let me double check and see how that works. It's usually, the way I understand it, it's usually about, I try to go to a site that has lesser security and has been a way for cyber attacks to infiltrate the firewalls and some other things. I, I didn't get an answer specifically to the question of clickbait, and that's, I think that's what it's called in the cybersecurity world, is when you get sent something that looks like it's from somebody that you know, and then you click on an attachment, and that is their portal into your computer. So I would need to double check with our team in IT to find out about clickbait and whether we've done training. There is pretty robust cybersecurity training that can be done, and so I also will, would like to check with our city clerk, HR manager, and risk manager, all in the form of Dana Swanson, to see whether our risk management provider, insurance provider through CGAPIA has provided any opportunities for the city to do any online cybersecurity training. So all of that to say, let me get back to you. I apologize for a long answer to a non-answer, but...
Sure. That's perfectly fine. That's why we're doing this in two segments. We are hiring an additional person in community development. Is that part of our program to help us speed up the permitting process? And is the chamber still helping us with that?
Yes, great question. Yes, it will help definitely in our processing speed. If, okay by the council, I can ask Scott Graham to provide sort of a high-level overview of the items that have been implemented to date in some of the things in the works to, to create additional efficiencies, if that's okay by you, Councilmember Davis, since you asked the question. I don't want to go too far afield, but I think, I think this is a good opportunity to share some of those updates.
Yeah, that would be great. And the purpose of my questions, these are ones I thought of today. I didn't send them to you previously, but it's, it's to get answers tomorrow. The Coral Avenue property at San Jacinto was originally designated to be site of a fire station. Is that close to being sold? And is it our plan to put the proceeds from that against the fire station loan?
Well, it is, Councilmember Davis, it is close. I think we have all the agreements in place now, and the applicant will be moving forward with their discretionary permitting process. And so that property will fully fund the money coming to the city once their discretionary permitting process is complete and they've passed all appeal periods. You do have a resolution that was adopted in association, you know, with that property that indicates that the council would, you know, put funds towards the fire station, paying that off with the proceeds from this. So that's a council decision about whether they want to continue to do that or not, but that, you do have a resolution that does reflect that.
All right, thank you. For the veterans' building improvements, do we have a timeline for completing the project to upgrade the audio visual and the electrical? And are we helping the Monday night group? They wanted to add a freezer on that outside patio.
No timeline yet on the improvements at Vet's Hall. We're still talking with AGP about that and trying to figure out what to do in immediacy if we need to do hybrid meetings. And then, and so I don't have a timeline on that yet, but hopefully soon I can get that for council. I don't have an answer on the freezer. I thought that was handled before, but that might be something we'll have to get back to you on.
All right. I would appreciate you getting back to me on that. Do we have, did the American Rescue Plan include a specific fund to help water users who were unable to pay their water bills? I know we have a substantial amount of money that is delinquent, and I thought that the ARP had a fund to cover that, but I haven't heard anything specific about that.
There are a number of portions of the ARPA, and the one that I presented on today was the money that was coming directly to local governments to address the downturn in revenues. I think we'd have to probably get some insights from our friends at the Ferguson Group to see if there's anything specific. I know that we can use the portions that come to cities for water and sewer projects, but I don't know that it would allow us to use it to pay down basically people who are in arrears.
Yeah, I think that, that's a right answer, that we need to see what's in the $1.7 trillion dollar amount. And I also believe the governor identified funds in his quote-unquote surplus budget to address that issue specifically in California. So that, that's not something that I think Ferguson can help us with, but probably through the League of Cities gets some more information on that.
All right. And what are the financial ramifications of paying off the fire engine? For instance, what is the total amount due on the note, and how much interest would we, would we pay if we continued to make periodic payments rather than paying off?
So the fire truck is, was a loan from the GFR, and so those payments are going back to the GFR. To me, they're positive ramifications because you end up paying... To me, they're positive ramifications because you end up paying that off and freeing up Measure E and Q dollars, yeah, Q and E dollars for other uses.
But in effect, we're paying ourselves right now?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so, so there's no real interest savings and, okay. And then my last question. Do we have a plan or a timetable to restore the water treatment plant site to its original state?
I believe that I'd ask either Mr. Collins or Mr. Leibig to answer that question.
Not at this time. There's, there's no specific plan nor funds identified. This largely has to be settled through discussions with Kayukas since they are co-owners of the land with the city. So there's a lot of steps to get to that, to the end of that process from where we stand today. So the WRF project, the Water Reclamation Facility project, does not include funds for demolition of the existing treatment plant. That's largely because we knew we had to sort out a lot of things with Kayukas Sanitary District. Rob, anything else to add to that?
No, it's, but it, just to clarify, it is part of our coastal development permit to perform that restoration. So we do have permitting in place to do that work. It's just, we don't have a, the apportionment of costs worked out with Kayukas nor a schedule yet.
Well, I guess the reason I'm asking is that are we planning to get our new permit in a couple of years, our new discharge permit?
We'll have that new discharge permit before the expiration of the time schedule order in February of 2023, likely near the end of next year. We will have that, or the end of this year, we will have that discharge permit. I know we've gone a couple of rounds with the board on the engineer's report, so we're well on the way to getting that discharge permit.
So I guess the reason I'm asking about negotiations with the CST is that perhaps it's not too soon to start that.
Just would definitely agree, and we reached out to Rick Kuhn, the GM for the Kayukas Sanitary District, to start that discussion.
Okay, that's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. One of the maybe positive things about going last is all the great questions have been asked, so that leaves very little for me to say. But I again want to thank staff, especially for, again, somebody commented, several of you commented, a very easy to read document. It's getting easier every year to do that. We have about seven minutes to go, so I'll just concentrate on maybe some of the other issues that we might discuss tomorrow. The first observation is that Councilmember Addis made, made the comment that this is a very positive looking budget, and it is much more positive than it's been in years. For me, the issue is unfunded capital improvement projects and the identification of those projects. That really, to me, is the greatest concern long-term. I noted in the CFAC questions that there were questions about assessment of capital improvement project needs. We've talked about it with Harbor Fund and other capital improvement needs within the city. So my question would be, what's the anticipated process and what might you bring back with regards to that study for us to consider? And when might we see it?
I'll start, and then Mr. Collins may want to add something. We have put in financing money to be able to do that assessment. I think that it's a high priority for the city manager, and I think it's also definitely going to be on the top of the list for the new Assistant City Manager Administrative Services Director. And I know that it's a high priority for the new Public Works Director. And so I think that the reality is, is that there is no specific timeline. I've done a similar thing in another life with another city, and it is not an insubstantial undertaking. It requires the commitment and time from all of the different staff that have facilities that need to be, have some attention given to, which includes just about every asset that we own. So I would anticipate, and this is just me, and I thank you for all of those nice things you've said, but I mean, the same nice things said to me by Scott when I say this, I think it's going to take you all of next fiscal year to imagine the scope of work and then put out an RFP and actually do the work. So I wouldn't anticipate that it would come to you any sooner than, than a year from now. And that would be an expedited process in my mind.
Yeah, thanks Katie, I agree with you. That's a huge endeavor. Nonetheless, I think something that will inform council significantly on the future revenue needs of the city, because we're falling behind on a number of different areas where infrastructure needs to be either replaced and/or improved. And so the knowledge of what the magnitude of those cost potentials might be would be helpful. So that's perfect, and I appreciate that. I'll make the observation also that the water fund appears to be through the 215 processes, an enterprise fund that's in very good shape, especially with regard to our low-interest loans. However, I note that there's, there was a discussion at CFAC about the capital improvement projects and reassessing those and reprioritizing those. And I would just look forward to that conversation happening and, and getting an understanding of perhaps when you present the budget, what the capital improvement projects will be for the next year or so for the water fund in addition. The other observation that I'll make is that my biggest concern is the Harbor Fund. We've talked about it a number of times. It lacks sorely from significant revenue sources, and I don't know that camping is the answer on the Embarcadero or close to the Embarcadero. And the, the consideration of looking at something specifically to augment funding for the Harbor Enterprise Fund, I think is something that should be moved to the forefront. And it would be great to have a discussion with regards to that soon. I know, I thought we'd maybe agendize that as something to bring back, but I do think times of the essence there. There may be some revenue opportunities, and I don't want to put fear in the minds of our leaseholders, because that's not where I'm going, but there may be revenue opportunities that could help shore up that fund fairly significantly, and look forward to that discussion fairly quickly because of the needs there. Also looking for something to come back on a Section 115 trust to look at Calpers pension liabilities. We, I know we've talked about that a number of times, and I do believe there's an item that is supposed to come back with regard to that. That would provide the city with an opportunity to invest at a higher rate of return from the water fund and would set aside money specifically for pension liabilities. My concern obviously is that the discount rate for Calpers, I believe, is overstated right now, and we are going to get soon, maybe in the next year or so, some not-so-good news about the return to that fund and, or the lack thereof, and increased liability for the city. So it would be important for us to, I think, get, get something back on that consideration soon, and I don't mean by June, obviously, when you present the budget. The, the other policy items that I wanted to address had to do with our, our financial policies. We are supposed to review those annually. I would propose that Policy 46-18, that's 46-18, the Policy 85-18, 85-18, and 89-18 or 89-18, as well as 9-19 would be the most relevant ones to look at prior to approving the budget. So however you'd like to consider a process for having council to look at those policies to see if there might be any changes that are necessary. I'll key in on one, 85-18 is the General Fund Emergency Reserve Policy. In my opinion, our reserve levels are inadequate, and I would appreciate a conversation with regard to those levels and the possibility of increasing those levels. And then the others have to do with reserve policies and risk management reserves as well. The, maybe second to last thing, if you look at the comprehensive annual financial report, and I know everybody doesn't have that in front of you right now, on page 13 of the last report, which was for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, the most recent one, it gives you a breakdown of really what is contained within the General Fund Emergency Reserve. And it has a number of items that I think, from a policy standpoint, I would like, I know I would like to discuss, including vehicle replacement, capital accumulation, project accumulation, some opportunity funds, and some general operating fund revenues. And I think it would behoove us to, before we approve the budget, to redefine exactly what we're talking about with regard to that. I think it gives a skewed view of what reserves we have when you include capital replacement funds as part of your reserve. And it, and it, I think diminishes the true nature of what we really have available. I know those dollars would be available, but you're robbing capital accumulation funds to balance the operational budget. We've done that before, and I just don't think that's a good policy decision. So I would like to include that in the discussion prior to approving the budget. And with regard to the 141 project, thank you, Councilmember Davis, for your explanation. And Rob, Rob, it would be great, since we've had a number of conversations, not only at CFAC, but at the council level, it would be great to just have perhaps a slide for tomorrow showing the potential funding sources in the shortfall, and just, just for council to see and for the public to see. I do agree with Councilmember Davis that even though SLOCOG has not acted, at a board level, there is significant staff support for assisting us with the other half of the $4.1 or $4.2 million shortfall. And my belief is, is, is that if we do not move forward with continuing to fund that and plan for that, that next year, this will no longer become a project that will be viable or included on SLOCOG's agenda, and in my opinion, will never happen for the city of Morro Bay. And I would, I would just hate to see that happen. Perhaps lastly, I raise the issue not because of personal gain, but two years ago, I believe, we had asked CFAC to look at city council compensation and to review that. We held off on that and asked them not to review that because of the pandemic. I believe that in order to fully understand the environment around us and the adequacy of reimbursement for council members, that it should be looked at by CFAC and would suggest that we, we place that on their agenda for consideration. Again, that's, that's been already approved by council, and again, we, we held off on that because of the pandemic. My major concern is that I believe that it limits the pool of individuals that potentially may run for city council, who have either full-time jobs and don't have an opportunity to be adequately compensated for council-related duties. And it limits the pool of individuals out there that I think can even consider running for a city council. And so again, not looking for anything that has to do with personal gain, but I do think it's something that we should do from a policy standpoint and that we agreed upon previously to evaluate and would suggest that CFAC agendize that and move forward with that. With that, we're right at 5:05, and I think we'll stop for the day here. Thanks for the great questions, everybody. Katie, will you have another presentation tomorrow, or will this just be a continuing conversation?
I'm thinking that there'll probably be some slides that respond to some of the questions, but not a full-fledged presentation.
Great, okay. We just, just wanted to get an idea of what to expect tomorrow, and we'll look forward to any further questions and hearing back with regard to the questions that have been answered. Thanks again, staff and councilmembers. Great discussion, robust presentation, and I see your finger, Katie.
I think Dana's going to want you to continue this meeting to a date.
Yes, I'm going to.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, and so that will end our meeting for today. This will be a continuance to tomorrow, Wednesday, May 26th at 3:00 PM via Zoom once again. So we will continue our meeting until 3:00 PM tomorrow. And I will tell you that we do have a city council meeting this evening at 5:30 PM. So hopefully those of you that are interested will tune back in in about 25 minutes. Thanks again to all, and if there's nothing else, I'll go ahead and adjourn us or continue us until tomorrow. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Very much.